United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You need to stay here long enough to get your certificates for...
I have your certificate. Thank you very much.
Cheers.
Thank you.
We will move on then to Board and Administrative Reports, starting with the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening. We have a long list of activities as the time in December before the holidays creates lots of opportunities for celebrations. Congratulations to South Park Middle School Olivia Sebold, who recently won the Downtown Rotary's Manufacturing Essay Contest. Olivia received a Champion $20 Gift Certificate when she was able to read her essay to the Rotarian Luncheon. Close to $330 was raised by South Park 8th Grade students who recently spent a few hours waiting on tables at the Pizza Ranch and Community Impact Fundraising Event. Nice job. It brought the Superintendent to the Pizza Ranch for the first time. South Park Middle School sent a big thank you to Shopko for their $500 contribution, as well as the continued support of the Panther Way PBIS Program. This is the third year South Park 7th Grade students have participated in the Hour of Code, which is a global movement for students in over 180 countries to be involved in coding for an hour in hopes that students will see the importance and opportunities available in the computer sciences. This year, students created their own floppy bird game, which they shared with friends and family. Congratulations to Oshkosh West Jr., Josh Pryor, for achieving his Eagle Scout rank. Josh's Eagle Scout project was to create kiosks for the outdoor gardens at Evergreen Retirement Community, in which he displayed OSD student artwork. What a great addition to the gardens and a wonderful way to allow everyone to appreciate our students' artwork. Thank you to Josh. 3rd Grade Webster Stanley students had the opportunity to connect with 4th Grade students in Mexico via Google Hangout, where they learned about Mexican culture and celebrations. Webster Stanley 3rd Grade students are matched with partner residents at Evergreen Retirement Home, someone who they visit each month to share memories, talk, and compare craft projects. During the month of November, students and residents talked about how parades have changed over the years and made turkey decorations for the residents' doors. Thanks for the wonderful partnership. Carl Traeger 7th and 8th Grade students recently performed Shrek the Musical for Oakwood and Carl Traeger Elementary School students and their families. Congratulations to Oshkosh West's head basketball coach, who was recently recognized for her 150th career win on November 26th. Congratulations to four Oshkosh West High School tennis players, who have been awarded All-State Honors. Great job for them. Forty-five Oshkosh West multicultural club members and Oshkosh North High School students recently participated in a fashion show and featured among the entire...at the Oshkosh among New Year. It was a great success. Alps Charter Lego League team, The Polish Greens, earned 5th in the overall competition at Sectionals and are looking forward to the state competition in February. The team gave a great presentation on their project to help bees recover from pesticide poisoning and demonstrated their teamwork abilities when they worked through a senior sensor issue at the robotics challenge. Alps Charter Lego League Code Orange won the sectional tournament, earning the highest robot score of the day and awarded the tournament champions. They presented a book that they had created, Backyard Bat: How Buddy Bat Became Our Backyard Friend, which was created and intended to teach kids about bats and as great allies, and that they are pollinating our foods, controlling our insect population, and help prevent the spread of diseases. Peace Preschool students take time three times per year to spread good cheer to elderly community members by sending greeting cards at Christmas for Valentine's Day and Easter. What a great way to bring smile to others. Oakwood parents and students adopted six families for Christmas this year through the Salvation Army's Adopt a Family Program. What a great way to support the Oshkosh community. Tipler and Alps Dance Teams and Boys Basketball Team just competed and had a completely very successful season. The 8th Grade boys were undefeated, and the 7th Grade boys experienced many wins as well, while learning many lessons, and went beyond the winning and losing due to their amazing coaches' training. We know one of those coaches is John Ryland. Sounds like he might have written that. Smith Elementary School students created thank you cards for Oshkosh Police and Fire Department to display what they learned about the value of respect, kindness, gratitude, and giving back to the community. 7th and 8th Grade students at Tipler and Alps held a wonderful performance of The Lion King Jr., which would have, you would have thought, it was a Broadway show with a great background, lighting, music, singing. Great job. Beautiful music could be heard from Tipler and Alps Charter School last week, when the three orchestras performed on December 15th. 6th Grade students, who only had been playing since September 6th, 6th Grade students have been playing their instruments a bit longer, and advanced orchestra students played four difficult pieces, performed wonderfully for a crowd that was wowed by their talent. Jefferson Elementary students had an excellent performance during their December holiday concert at the Kimball Auditorium. As a part of the Learning for Poverty in Winnebago County and the City of Oshkosh Communities One, students partnered with Oshkosh Fire Department for the 17th Annual Toy and Food Drive, where they worked to promote the drive by being on the radio and television stations, handing out posters, holding signs in the neighborhoods for passersby to advertise their donations, and students learned valuable lessons about how they could become, make a difference, and impact the community through that drive. 2nd Grade students at Jefferson Elementary enjoyed sampling fresh fruits and vegetables as a part of a grant. They were able to research using the iPad and shared a smart board what plants look like and how they grow, and where the closest farms are located to grow each of those foods. A lot of fun facts about foods. They are grateful for the community's support and the use of technology resources to learn about foods. Kindergarten students at Jefferson Elementary School enjoyed receiving a large cloth gift bag filled with fun and personal items like hats, mittens, books, school supplies, and snacks from First English Church. Friends from the Thrive and Action Grant were used to add to the Scholastic Readers and the bags as well. The big event for all of the 8th Grade students studying Career Exploration Model, or the Oshkosh Citywide Career Cluster Showcase, where over 55 exhibitors have booths for students to explore information about careers, colleges, camps, and high school courses. We invite you to take part and moment to click this site when it's posted to learn more about this exciting event. Finn Webster Elementary School students and Merrill's and Compass Room mascot wishes to wish all students and staff a very Merry Christmas. Finn has been really busy visiting autism classrooms, EBD rooms, and Finn recently celebrated his 8th birthday. Finn is a real live dog that is always welcome there. Here are a list of the Superintendent's activities for a number of this past number of weeks. Last night, joyfully, a wonderful concert by North High School Choirs, and completed the holiday circuit that began in early November, and meeting all of the elementary concerts, all of the high school concerts, and with the exception of missing a few middle school concerts when they're triple booked in the same evening. I can get in two, but I can't get in three concerts in one night. So with that, what a joy, and my congratulations and thank you to all of our students, their parents who support them, and wonderful teachers who create music throughout the community. What a joy to enjoy so much wonderful enthusiasm throughout the district. With that, I'm going to turn the Superintendent's Report over to Beth Wyman, who will be talking to us about curb appeal for our schools and the work that she's been doing.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Beth.
Hi. Is everyone familiar with the curb appeal project, or can I give you just a little bit of background, so everyone's up to speed? That be okay? Okay. When we were doing the focus groups for Strategic Plan 2, we heard from a number of community members as we were completing our task of putting together all the comments for the focus groups. We learned loud and heard loud and clear that the neighbors of the schools and many of the business people were not pleased with the curb appeal of our schools. The business people felt they would have people come to town, and when they looked at many of our schools from the outside, those same people elected to live someplace else and maybe didn't take a job in Oshkosh merely because of the exterior of the buildings. They didn't take the time to go in the buildings. They didn't take the time to research the schools. It is a what you see is what you get mentality, and that's very unfortunate for many of our neighborhoods. We understand that the district has a lot of financial resources that are not available for the exteriors of the schools. You have put so much money into the technology and to the interior, to the teachers and to the students. And we thought, what a wonderful way for Oshkosh for Education, whose primary purpose is to reconnect our community with our schools and our school district, to get involved in this project. Our goal, as we initially started, was to be the watchdog for the strategic plan. We have done that. We continue to do that. But we also feel that one way we can help the district is by advocating for the district, by the Facebook page, singing the praises of all the wonderful things that are happening. And we also felt that since this was such a big concern of many of the constituents in Oshkosh, that this would be a great way to help as well. We really didn't know where we were going this project, or the extent of the project, but now that we're about, we had our first meeting in the middle of October, it's pretty darn exciting, and I'd like to share where we are with you right now. We started to explore this and put together a committee, and we understand that collaboration is the key to this project, so we want to have as many partners as at the table, and even if they're not at the table, we want to have resources throughout the community to make this happen. Currently on our committee, we have the UWO Landscaping Director and the Sustainability Department Director. Go HNI, which is Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, which used to be Neighbor Works, and they are the leader of all the neighborhood associations. I have met with that group. City Planning and Parks Department Director. Realtors, business people, the pals, partners with the schools. Some of the parents of Emmeline, what a fantastic job they did at that school, and we want to know what they did well, what they would have done different. Principals of West Merrill, high school agriculture, horticulture teachers. Sue Schnorr and Jim Fox, marketing specialist, who is very excited about branding this. Citywide PTO, meeting with them in January. Oshkosh Area Community Foundation. As it looks right now, the Community Foundation has a fund called Taking Root. Taking Root provided many of the trees on terraces in our community and also replaced many, many of the trees that were devastated by storms in South Park. We believe that we are going to be able to put a pass-through fund, which people would be able to donate to curb appeal, as a sub of the Taking Root Fund. So the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation is willing to help with that. And Kelly Olmstead, your representative, is now on our committee. And this should, we never want to have anyone be surprised about what is going on. This needs to be a fluid conversation, and most importantly, there is nothing worse than receiving a gift if you can't maintain it or if you don't want it. So along the way, we have to continue to talk. Superintendent and I have talked about functional balance of the landscaping. This is not going to be rose gardens and beautiful annual flower beds. This is going to be landscaping that will, I don't want to say lasts the ages, because it doesn't last the ages, but will require very little maintenance. At least that's what the plan is.
The emphasis on perennials, not on angles.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And when we took on this project, we believe that the project will increase pride in the neighborhood, schools, and for those attending, working, or teaching at the schools. Show our entire community, citizens, and guests that our schools are important to us. Enhance the economic development in our community. Attract students to the Oshkosh Area School District. Increase the property values of the homes. Provide a learning opportunity. We've talked a lot with Growing Oshkosh. I didn't mention them. Dani Stoli is on our committee, and she has gardens at many, many of the schools, so it provides learning opportunities as well. And enhance the quality of life in Oshkosh by being able to use our schools as community centers. And as you all know, we have embraced the idea of neighborhood schools, and as those neighborhood schools continue to become part of the neighborhood, it's very important that we show them as a place of pride. I'd like to show you actually four pictures. I took pictures at all of the schools, and it was very interesting. These are two examples. This is, if you go back to the other picture, this is a picture of Oshkosh West, and this area is absolutely gorgeous. If you go to the next picture, this is what's on the other side of the building. And along with that is a sign that has a tree hanging over it, and the sign is broken. So we do a good job with part of it, but not with the other, and I am not faulting anyone. There's only so, you know, so many dollars to go around right now, but we really feel that this needs to be one of the priorities of the school district and the building and grounds. Oaklawn, you have a beautiful, beautiful new school, but when you get a little closer, this is what's at your front door. And that, to me, is not acceptable, and I'm sure it's not acceptable to you as well. They put in the building, but then there just wasn't the money left or the time left to finish it with those little things that make such a difference. So this is what we are trying to accomplish. Initially, everyone said, Beth, you can't do this in such a short timeline, but I think this is what our timeline is going to be. We are going to work our tails off this spring and get everything in order. I have a meeting with landscapers in January, and I hope that they will adopt a few schools as well, at least as far as some in-kind work. People have been so supportive. I have received phone calls, how can we help? How can we help? After talking to the university group, and not only do we have a Sustainability Director, we also have the director that's in charge of the Quest students that have to do volunteer work, I think this is all going to happen on a Saturday in September, possibly the third Saturday of September, and it is going to be every school on one day. When we started to talk about staging it out, you know, the ones that are in year three, it's tough to stay enthused for that long, and why didn't they get it? You know, so we still have a lot of plans to do. This is really in its initial steps, but I'm very, very excited because it's moving really rapidly. And I always pictured this happening in spring. Well, what happens in spring? Well, you have snow until Memorial Day. You have lake flies at some of the schools. You have field trips, and then it's June and everyone leaves, and your beautiful plants die because there's no one there to maintain them. So that got us thinking about fall, and I think we're shooting for September of this year. Questions?
Great idea. Have you talked with the master gardeners about helping out?
They will be part of it. Our concern, and we've talked, will this group do this? Will this group maintain this? My opinion would be that we don't rely on volunteers to maintain this, because it's real easy to say, yes, I'll do it, yes, I'll do it, but many times it doesn't happen, and you lose the consistency. You lose the consistency between schools. I think there needs to be a broader plan of how this is going to be maintained. As we've talked about in the past, schools are now a business, and if you're going to have a successful business, you are going to have a beautiful exterior, just as you would the interior, because you want all of your stakeholders to take pride in your business, and that's what we're trying to accomplish. As you're trying to compete with online schools and different districts and at home schools, you want that school to look, in our opinion, the best that it can possibly look, and that's what we're trying to help you with.
I really like the idea of doing all schools with a one day of action. I think that is a wonderful way of doing this.
Well, and not to give away all of our secrets, because we really have no secrets at this point, but one of the ideas, and this came from the UWO people, Lisa Mick, who is the head of landscaping at UWO, has been phenomenal. One of the next meetings that's going to happen is with Bill Sturm of the Parks Department, Lisa Mick, and our high school horticulture teachers to start talking about plants. When we started to talk about plants, we talked about perennials that many people have in their gardens already, and fall is such a wonderful time to split plants. And Growing Oshkosh said that they would be the repository for all of these community plants and divvy them up into 17 schools, 20 schools, so we would have some consistency, yet some differences. And how wonderful is that? And, I mean, that's just part of it, but that just shows the level of collaboration, and Jim, I couldn't agree more. I think it could be one of the most exciting Saturdays this community has ever seen. And this needs to be a community project, and we embrace it as a community project, and the more people we get involved, the more successful it will be, and the more pride everyone will have in it. And with our schools being neighborhood schools, it really does reach every corner of the community.
If someone is watching this evening, or will see this on the rebroadcast, and is moved at this giving time of the year to write a check or bring in cash, where would they send that?
It would go to the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation with emphasis on curb appeal.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking. We'll stay in touch. Thank you very much.
One of the things I would just like to add is the fact that some excellent examples of using horticulture correctly. I have never been in a high school with courtyards, or any school with courtyards, that are as well-maintained as horticulture classes at West High School. There isn't a single one of those courtyards that don't look nice and are well-done, and so turning to our horticulture teachers, as well as their students, is an excellent opportunity, because those are excellent models. And unfortunately, unless you're in the school, you don't see those beautiful courtyards. And they're so well-maintained, and I know that Jim Fox reports that, yes, we mow them, but everything else is taken care of by the horticulture students.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Beth. Moving on to other committee reports. I believe Mrs. Olmstead has a report for us.
I do. On December 15th, we had a Facility and Finance Committee meeting, and Mr. J. Jones was in and reported that the committee, to us as a committee, that he did a security and safety assessment. Were done at both of our high schools through a grant with the Wisconsin School Safety Coordinator Association, and they looked at some of the different stuff between the two high schools for safety issues. Some of the points, a few of them that they looked at was, they reviewed environmental climates for the West's weight room to prevent the doors from being propped open, how to get the air circulation in there. Signs on every exterior door directing people to Door 24 and 38 to entry at West. Those are the two main entrances, and that the other entrances are in a lot of, you know, if you go to an offside door, you have no idea to go to, you know, 24th or 38th, so they talked about that. Upgrading the camera systems at both high schools, which they gave, we also had an update on the security cameras that evening. Campus exterior lighting needs to be updated, mainly West, but both schools. Also, they talked a lot about, which I had discussed with Beth in extent this week, about campus landscaping. For security reasons, that all of the shrubs should not be more than three feet tall, and all of the trees should be trimmed up seven feet tall for security reasons with the police department in securing the areas. And then also, the camera issues were a major recommendation for North. That was their big take on North. There was a discussion regarding camera access at the high schools and who is responsible for monitoring them. There is not one person monitoring the cameras at all times. We don't have the capability of that right now. However, there is an active feed, and it was noted that the cameras all hold 30 days of information before it's overwritten. There was a suggestion to review what the district's liability carrier for exposure of having camera access. Who can see these cameras, or who could have access, and our liability on who gets access to what's on these feeds and what's on them for live feed also. There was an update on the security cameras. Mr. Dave Gunlock provided the committee with the project update. There has not been an appropriate infrastructure in most schools for the cameras, which we all are pretty aware of. Resources were approved from the community to equip all schools with the security cameras for the 2017-18 school year, which was through the referendum. The system would leverage existing technology infrastructure and would be available to district personnel and law enforcement. The standard bidding process is being used, and the building administrators were involved to clarify security reasons or security needs. The initial estimate is 648 cameras, and the cabling came in at $1.43 million. They broke it down to three areas that they wanted to use for priority, and the areas would include, the first one would be essential for school safety and monitoring of the key areas. Two would be enhanced school safety and allow for monitoring of high-traffic areas, and then three would be optional cameras to enhance the coverage of the major needs. The RFP is structured for a module zone implementation. There is, we were given a timeline. They will be coming to us, there's an opening bid in the beginning of January, and then they'll determine the project vendor, staff report resolution will be created for our January 6th and January 11th board meeting, and then the contract will be awarded. The project is, completion date is scheduled for August 25th, so before the school. It's also recommended that a short workshop take place to inform the public doing to this, that this was on the referendum, so we're asking them to do a short update on it at a meeting, just a five-minute update of where they're doing with the camera. So Dr. Gunlock will put that on the agenda for us. We also had an update on Oaklawn property, the property that was currently that we attained. There was, Mr. Fox came to us and told us that they were thinking about using a design indicated to use a space for a... indicated to use the space for a proposed parking lot to accommodate staff. There's currently not enough parking at Oak Lawn for the staff. There's part of it, and I think there was 40 stalls or 20 stalls there? I am way off on that number. Can't remember.
I think that new design was 50.
The new design was 50 more. A lot of the parents, there's a lot of issues with parking and dropping children off, issues, there's not even enough parking right now for the staff that's currently at the school. So they're using road parking, which is hazardous for walking and the snowbanks and the plowing and all those issues. He was looking at, it was noted that the project needs to remain affordable and not trigger any more water requirements from the city. So they were looking into that. And then on the backside of the, on the backside of this parking lot, they were looking at putting in possibly playground equipment, because the playground equipment at Oak Lawn is for younger children. So they were going to try to think about putting in some other equipment for the older children in the school. And also, the area to remain, as well as leaving some of the area open due to potential northside growth, so that if we need an addition for Oak Lawn in the years to come, that there's enough room for that. There was a question as to whether parking was a higher priority than having an actual park area. It was noted that individuals involved with soccer and softball programs concluded that the space was not large enough to use for that, and that they were interested in more places with lots of fields that they could multi-use, and not just one field here and there. There was also a brief discussion of whether parking lots were something to spend money on. It was suggested to look at downsizing the parking lot to maybe 40 spots. Currently, it's scheduled at 50. Discussion on how to best handle the parking issues at Oak Lawn. We should include Mr. Joe Hanknett, which is the principal of the administration, and how he sees using that space for his staff also. Mr. Fox also reminded the committee that it was, this is just an update, and at this point, all this information was very preliminary. This is just some ideas that they're looking at. Once this comes back to the committee, he will have a cost of what type of parking lot could be built, as well as the cost of creating, converting space to green space. There could also be discussion on the direction of the space. It would also be helpful to have other data, such as how many preschool through 5th grade teachers are there every day, and how many specialists come and go, so that we know exactly how many spots we need. And then we looked at Policy 6320, which is the purchasing policy. Mrs. Schnorr inquired as to the ultimate goal of this policy. We've been reviewing this goal or this policy. And Dr. Herzog indicated consistency in the application of the policy relative to not only single items, but entire invoices, and whether it's for materials or consulting. She also indicated transparency of communication are important regarding all of our purchases. A suggestion of a document showing added expenditures and their reasons why would be helpful. There was also concern with the timing of the bills payable reaching the board prior to voting, because we get them so quickly and then turning them over, and we don't have as much time as we'd like maybe to question them or look into them. And Ms. Schnorr will continue to explore the issue and bring back recommendations to the committee. She's going to look at some other policies and speak with Viola and some other school districts that she's communicated with and look at those.
Thank you, Mrs. Olmstead. Wes?
I also have a report from the Policy and Governance Committee, which met on December 15th. There were two main agenda items. They both dealt with policies. The first was 8405, Environmental Health and Safety Program. Jim Fox spoke to the committee about making changes to this existing policy due to concerns about indoor air quality and fire safety. In speaking with the school district's liability carrier, there is concern about the soft furniture in classrooms. Furniture needs to be cleanable and meet fire retardant standards. From a health standpoint, the furniture cannot be maintained by the custodians if it's fabric. In the event there is a norovirus outbreak or other health concern, those items cannot be properly cleaned. After a great deal of discussion, it was determined that a small committee should be created by Sue Schnorr and Jim Fox to help define and create criteria and language for this policy update, which could potentially be an update to the process or guidelines. The committee should include PTO members, principals, teachers, who discuss all aspects of changes, including who the stakeholders are, how the rules will be enforced, and where the money would come from to replace items that need to be removed, especially for those schools that do not have an active PTA and have difficulty raising funds. The Policy and Governance Committee requested seeing the final product prior to enforcement if it ends up being a guideline, which does not usually need committee or board approval. Jim will bring the committee's final product back to a future Policy and Governance meeting. And he said it may be determined that these changes would be phased in. So Jim and Sue are going to work together to create a committee to work on language and the impact changes to this policy would have. Once guidelines have been created, then Jim will return to the Policy and Governance Committee with an update. The other major agenda item we talked about was Policy 3120, Unemployment of Professional Staff. This was brought to the Policy and Governance Committee by Lori Myron, who updated the committee on the need for some revisions, which included some capitalization issues, addition of a statement already implied but now spelled out, addition of a letter S to a word, and addition of resources. I had questioned how Public Law 34, PI 34, and how it relates to this policy would play out in the school district. There are some new legislative guidelines which allow someone of the bachelor's degree in certain content areas can go to a school to become a teacher, even though they don't have any education credits. And if they're employed for more than four semesters, I had said six in the meeting, so we'll have to correct the minutes, it's actually four, then the district can get them a license, which is a departure from licensure at the state level, which has always had to go through to the Department of Public Instruction. As the policy stands, this would not include an emergency license. The committee was concerned about lowering the standards for teacher quality and how they would lessen the effectiveness of the instruction. Guidelines are changing, and many are concerned, but the legislature feels there should be other pathways to education. I was asked to get information to the group so that they can review it and determine if any additional changes are required at this time to the policy. And I did follow through on that and sent the changes to PI 34 to the committee members. We will have the next Policy and Governance meeting on January 12th at 1:00 PM. Are there any other reports from board members, any other committees? Okay, then let's move on to the non-agenda-related public forum. Is there anyone who would like to speak on any topic that is not on the agenda this Moving on to the agenda-related public forum. Is there anyone who would like to speak to an agenda item in tonight's board meeting? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Consent Resolution Agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on every item and has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Is there anyone who wanted to pull anything out of the consent resolution? I would like to pull numbers six and 10. Okay, then moving forward, the board will consider approval of number one, minutes of the November 9th, 2016 special board meeting; minutes of the November 16th, 2016 regular board meeting; minutes of the November 16th, 2016 executive session of regular board meeting; minutes of December 7th, 2016 regular board meeting; bills payable; property condition assessment contract; name change for Jacob Shapiro Brain-Based Instruction Laboratory School; Oshkosh West High School participation in a varsity baseball game on Sunday, April 9th, 2016, at Fox City Stadium in Appleton.
2017.
I'm sorry?
2017.
Oh, I'm sorry. 2017. Is there a motion to?
Solve.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on those items? All right, please call the rule.
Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Leberger?
Aye.
Leberger, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, then going back to Resolution Number Six, Personnel Appointments, Temporary Appointments, Resignations, Retirement, and Salary Schedule. I need a motion and a second.
Solve.
Second.
Okay, I had asked that this one be pulled. I always feel that we owe a debt of gratitude to those people who have spent years of service to our students and their families, and I just want to recognize Eileen Peschel, who is retiring as an ID teacher assistant from Oshkosh North High School, effective March 10th, 2017. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, please call the rule.
Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Leberger?
Aye.
Leberger, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Motion carried.
All right. Resolution Number 10, Most Blessed Sacrament Parish Commercial Property Lease Agreement. Need a motion and a second?
Solve.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I had asked that this one be pulled in order to be open and transparent. I feel like I need to make it known that I'm a member of, longtime member of this particular parish. While I will not benefit in any way, financially or otherwise, by this agreement, I will be voting present on this one to avoid any possible concern related to a conflict of interest.
May I just comment? As you were aware, this afternoon, we had several technical corrections based on our general liability carrier advice. And we had not, as of 5:00 today, feedback exactly on those changes from the Diocese of Green Bay. But there may be some technical fixes on that. But we would also like to add that we were grateful to the parish council, who assisted us greatly in finding a new home for this specialty program, that we ran out of room for, at the Boys and Girls Club.
Quickly, we ran out of room.
Yeah. And are most appreciative for the community cooperation we have with this facility. And we're grateful that we have a place that will work for us starting in January.
Okay. Are there any other further comments or discussion on this item? All right, please call the rule.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Present.
Herzog?
Present.
Leberger?
Aye.
Leberger, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. We will move on then to Resolution Number 11, the WASB Resolutions to the Delegate Assembly for Individually Considered Resolutions. Mr. Mack?
I would begin with recognizing the fact that we have a whole set of recommended resolutions that are coming from the School Boards Association, and that I would concur that virtually all of them, with the exception of probably sparsity aid, which we don't have sparsity aid, we don't benefit from that, would be beneficial to the district and that are going on record and clearly understanding that the additional, the changes, if they were to be put into place by the legislature, would be beneficial to the school district. And that we would hope that positive direction coming from the legislature with the leadership from the governor would be appropriate after some eight years now of zero growth in revenue, with the exception of the support of our local voters by two referendums being passed, that any additional direction and supported by the wisdom of the School Boards Association would be very, very helpful. With the deference to Board Vice President and Chair of this meeting, I would be glad to respond to any questions that relate to any of these items. But I've gone through them and spent considerable time with and legislative committee work on this from the district administrator's perspective, and certainly can be very supportive of those.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. I was appointed to the Wisconsin Association of --
Can we get a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Solve.
I had to move this meeting along. Thank you.
It's great we have Tracy here to keep us in order.
Yes, certainly is. Sorry about that. I was appointed to the WASB, or Wisconsin Association of School Boards Policy and Resolutions Committee for a two-year term. And so I've had a chance to go over these several times at meetings with that group. That's a 25-member board, or committee, which is made up of representatives from that number of school districts from throughout the state. Most of them represent school districts of fewer than 3,000 students. So I'm happy to be part of that group and to be able to represent larger districts. The purpose of this group is to take any resolutions from any school district submitted by early September. And then the committee convenes and reviews all these with the input from legal staff from the School Board Association. And the idea is to prepare these then for the delegate assembly, which is made up of all the school districts in the state. Representatives from all boards are present at that meeting. And this board has previously appointed Mr. Evans to represent us at that meeting in January, at the joint meeting of the School Board Association, the School Business Manager Association, and the School District Administrator Association. Some of those at the top of the list, at least the first two, had to do with revisions to current WASB policy. Resolution Number Three would give K-8 districts the ability to set the starting date for their school district, since they don't have high school students who are employed in the tourism industry. And so they could set their opening of school prior to September 1st if they chose. The group under Number Four wanted to provide additional recognition and resources for summer school learning, which would be a benefit to our district, since we have so many students involved in summer school. Number Five has to do with students who are out of attendance, maybe out of district, perhaps because they're homeless, or it could be other reasons, and then reimbursing the Number Seven, narrowing the disparities in allowable revenue under the revenue limits, was, although Oshkosh didn't submit that, we could have. It would directly benefit this district, because we have consistently spent under the revenue limits for such a long time. We and other districts would have an opportunity to increase our spending in a good way to benefit our students. So that's what that one deals with. Number Ten has to do with various ways of measuring readiness for college career and community, as Mrs. Conrad likes to explain to us. Number Eleven has to do with communication on those students who receive Medicaid and those then who might be eligible for free and reduced lunch, which I understand we already do, but evidently that's not across the state. Number Twelve recognizes that across Wisconsin school districts, we have students who deal with mental health issues on a daily basis, and what might be done to address those. Number Sixteen has to do with taking a position against education savings accounts, where dollars would follow students not only to private schools, but to other education entities that are not necessarily accredited. So looking for some accountability. And Seventeen deals with asking the school districts to review their policies to make sure that they are being fair to all students, especially those who have gender identity questions or concerns. So that's kind of a quick overview. Thank you.
And as your delegate, I again want to thank the board for giving me that position and indulge my Robert's Rules of Order geekiness. They are good at that. And I will be voting, once we approve these, I will be voting for these. And if things happen to change drastically, I will use my best judgment on what the board would want to do.
Thank you very much, and thank you for taking on that responsibility. Is there any further discussion on any of these items? Any questions, any concerns? And let's call the questions, Mrs. Conrad.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests for future agenda items?
We have a long list of things that are already on the list for coming up in January, so I think, I think we've got full meetings for, at least three meetings in January.
We do, including a special meeting on the first Wednesday, on the district literacy and reading program.
Right.
Very good. Are there any announcements this evening? Do we want to explain to the listening public when the upcoming vacation begins and when school resumes?
Sure, we can certainly do that.
We have time after the first of it.
Right, yes. Tomorrow is still a day of school, and effective the 23rd, that being the legal, thank, Christmas Eve Day observed, will commence with the holiday, and school will resume on Tuesday, January 3rd. So we will have school back in session, but about a 10-day break that occurs beginning this Friday, and will continue through Monday, January 2nd, with school resuming on Tuesday, January 3rd. We hope everyone to have a safe, relaxing opportunity for a break, and I would just like to comment that we have been so fortunate. In the last three weekends, we've had snow that had, and cold, that has really not endangered school closings. We had a weekend of activity shut down, but I am just so pleased that they haven't affected one minute of instruction, as a result of having this weekend weather occurring in that way, and I look forward to the rest of the winter being weekend weather.
Thank you very much. Are there any other announcements? All right, then moving on, we would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the disciplinary data of specific person under 19.851F Wisconsin statutes, a review of modified expulsion recommendation from the expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engaged in conduct while at school, or while under the supervision of a school authority, that endangered the property, health, or safety of others at school, and while not at school, or while not under the supervision of a school authority, that endangered the property, health, or safety of others at school, under Wisconsin 120.13 CE of Wisconsin statutes.
Solve.
Any discussion? Okay, please call the rule.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Leberger?
Aye.
Leberger, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner? Motion carried.
Okay, then going back to Resolution Number 6, Personnel Appointments, Temporary Appointments, Resignations, Retirement, and Salary Schedule. I need a motion and a second.
Solve.
Second.
Okay, I had asked that this one be pulled. I always feel that we owe a debt of gratitude to those people who have spent years of service to our students and their families, and I just want to recognize Eileen Peschel, who is retiring as an ID Teacher Assistant from Oshkosh North High School, effective March 10th, 2017. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, please call the rule.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Leberger?
Aye.
Leberger, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye.
Aye.
Evans, aye. Motion carried.
All right.